Welcome to those of you who are just joining. We will be starting momentarily. Thank you for coming. And welcome to those who are just joining. We'll be starting momentarily again. This is the Rachel Justice School Committee Candidate Forum. Welcome to the racial justice. School Committee Candidate Forum. My name is Jay Webb and I will be your moderator tonight. It's a couple of things. I was born and raised here in Melrose. And I've always said that I was lucky enough to be born and raised here, but smart enough not to leave. My wife Carrie calls it home now, along with the two greatest kids in the world. We're in the school system here in Melrose and third and fifth grade respectively. This forum is also being hosted by three racial justice groups here in Melrose. Fighting for Black Lives in Our Neighborhood, Melrose Racial Justice Community Coalition, and Friends of Melrose Met Co. So thank you to those groups for hosting this forum. A few notes before we get started. The questions I will be asking were crowdsourced from the community. And in the interest of time, I will not be asking the candidates any follow-up questions. That said, we hope to get through all of the questions tonight, but if you find you have additional questions for the candidates, we hope you reach out to them to learn more directly sometime before you vote and hopefully you will vote on November 7th. Speaking order was randomly selected. And to ensure equal time, our timekeeper will mute candidates if they exceed their allotted speaking times. So candidates hopefully will be clear and concise and aware of that. And finally, a recording of this event will be posted at melrose racial justice forums.org. Now let's have the four candidates introduce themselves. I guess, starting with David Trace.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk here tonight. And just a little bit about myself, I have three kids in the district, Winthrop, middle and high. And unlike probably a lot of folks, I come at this from a little different angle. I work in the corporate world. And for the last 20 years, my role has always been to connect the dots between the vision and goals we have, the plan about how we get there, and then making sure that we have the underpinned resources budget and the follow-through to make it happen. And as I thought about kind of how I personally could give back to the community, I was motivated to run for the school committee because I have a fundamental belief that education is what brings people together and it has the power to transform lives. And as I thought about my skills and some of the challenges we face in Melrose, I felt that this was the time for me to lean in and to bring that forward. And so as I think about the next four years and things that I hope that I can accomplish, a few points, I think one is, I think we have a great opportunity to just bring forward information, both in forums like this, but also more broadly in the community, which is being very clear on our goals and our measurements. Making sure that things like our budget are understood by others because ultimately what we talk about here, some of it will take money. And we need to make sure that we have those, that budget understanding and the underpinned funding to make it happen. And then also just a broader communication as well. I'm really pleased about the superintendent's approach. I look forward to helping sustain that and strengthening that connection to our goals and also outside of the broader community for those that may not be here tonight, but ultimately are impacted by the school districts. And in closing, I'll say one last thing, which is one of the current school committee members said to me, if I went, I'm going to be one of seven. And I've been there my whole career and I'm actually okay with that because ultimately this isn't about any one of us. It's about us building that shared understanding and working together to move us forward and to sustain that momentum. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, David. Seamus?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight to participate in this important forum. I'm running for the Melrose School Committee because I believe that all students must have access to a free and fair education and we must support our educators. My top three priorities are fixing our budget and promoting long-term planning, committing to engaging the Melrose community during the budget cycle by having public budget hearings at each school's PTO and a virtual option for those who cannot attend in person. This would allow for a meaningful engagement between the school committee and the public about the future of our schools. And then the third goal was developing and updating our curriculum to meet the needs and backgrounds of our students. I have over 20 years of public sector management experience, working on budgets, regulations, affordable housing and affordable health insurance at the state level and the federal government. Locally, I'm active in our schools as a room parent and library volunteer at the Roosevelt School. And I'm an appointee to the Melrose Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I previously sat on the Melrose Housing Production Plan Committee. I have a daughter at the Roosevelt School and another at the Franklin UCC School. I look forward to a meaningful discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Seamus. Matt?
Good evening, and thank you for everybody listening tonight, and thank you Jay for moderating us tonight, as well as the people who will tune in later. I really appreciate FBLN and the RJCC and the Friends of Melrose Met Co. putting this together and bringing it all together on these important issues. Introducing myself, I have two kids in the Melrose Schools, a first and a third grader at the Roosevelt School. And I, as other candidates do, fundamentally believe in the power of public education and the importance of it as a community pillar. I think it is something that we need to make sure is adequately offered to every student in the district. And that is a fundamental belief that I think the school committee should be carrying out. My background, I have spent the last 10 years working in public policy in the Massachusetts Senate, particularly a lot of that time around education policy and education funding. I was there and actively part of the legislators that were working to pass the Student Opportunity Act, which dramatically changed how the state reimburses schools in local districts with additional funding for the needs that they have in those districts. In addition, I've spent the last seven years volunteering my time as a member of the Board of Directors on the Community Action Agency of Somerville, where we run a Head Start program for about a little less than 200 low-income kids in Somerville. And my priorities in thinking about what I've heard from people in the community, as well as what I'm thinking about myself as I look at the school committee, we have some very big decisions ahead of us around our budget. We know that there are serious gaps in the budget, particularly even in the current school year that we have to immediately fill. And we need to develop long-term strategies on how to plot out where we're headed, particularly around budget, but in many other areas as well. I think one of those strategies we have to start addressing is our school buildings. We need to have a real conversation about the space, make sure that we have enough space for all of our students to learn successfully, as well as make sure our spaces are adequately maintained and upgraded to a modern quality.
Time, that's time.
Thank you. I'll speak more later then. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Matt. Margaret, you're up next.
Thank you, Jay, and good evening, everyone. My name is Margaret Driscoll. I'm the current school committee chair. And I truly appreciate the invitation to this forum and for the work that your groups are doing. I know it's not, it's not easy. I am a white heterosexual woman of privilege, which comes with its own biases and often misunderstandings that I work to reflect on, adjust and evolve. I've served on the Melrose School Committee for 16 years with six times as the chair. And I've led every standing subcommittee as well as two superintendent search screening committees and served on countless other hiring and service committees in the district. Prior to that, I led an effort to move the Lincoln School Library from a reading room to a 21st century teaching and learning media center and volunteered as the Lincoln Library Coordinator for nine years. Advocating with our team and with success to bring the first ever paid library and media specialist into the elementary schools. In addition to my own three children who are proud Melrose alums, I feel like each of our 3,700 students are my own. They each deserve equitable opportunities that lift them up, that make them lifelong learners and curious learners. We need to meet every student where they are and we need to provide them voice and choice. Racism and bias do not belong in our schools and amongst our school family. And I have and will continue to work to eradicate them. And again, I thank you for this opportunity and look forward to our, our work together tonight.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Let's jump right into the first question. Seamus, this is coming to you, so get ready. In the Melrose Public School System, black students are suspended at higher rates than white students. You can see here, this, actually, before we get to there, Melrose says one of the highest rates of racial disparity in school discipline compared with 12 neighboring communities. And that slide that you got a quick peek at shows that there's a five to one ratio here, or about a five to one ratio here in Melrose, and actually a five to one ratio, you compare it to, you know, certainly five times more than Malden. And that's over a rough 10-year period of time between 2012 and 2021. So the question is, how do you plan to eliminate racial inequities in school discipline? Seamus?
The information presented in the survey about discipline in the schools is troubling. It's clear that we have a problem to address and it needs to change. School committee members can look at the data and use it to update our policies. Right now, we have a policy in place about how we handle de-escalating issues, but it's possible that staff are not adequately trained on it. One thing we can do with the data is look at a comparison with other school districts, including Stonem. It has a similar student population, but a much lower rate of discipline. We are fortunate that our acting superintendent came from the Stonem School, so we could tap into some of his knowledge about how Stonem has been successful. Other things that we can do are updating our policies, again, by borrowing from other districts, enhance professional development for our staff, setting a goal for our school principals to reduce unnecessary discipline. And we also need to speak to our students to learn about what they're experiencing and get feedback from them as we attempt to tackle this problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Seamus. Matt?
Thank you. This is a really important issue as it really impacts how students progress through their academics. And I do appreciate how much this group has done to highlight this issue. Academic outcomes quickly decline as students experience more out-of-school time, especially when it's the result of bias. Students certainly perceive and understand when that happens to them. Any out-of-school suspension should be the highest concern to the district at all times and used only in the most extreme cases because of the gravity of the use of this type of discipline. It should involve extensive rigor on development of policy and regular evaluation of decision-making. For years, I've worked closely with Citizens for Juvenile Justice on measures to limit suspensions statewide, not only because of the significant academic impact, but also because of the documented disproportionate use with students of color. As a first step, we need to understand the offenses alleged on students and critically evaluate whether these are the right types of offenses that deserve the discipline meted out, particularly for out-of-school suspension. For example, some of the work I've done at the state level, we've been trying to change the law around out-of-school suspensions that still allows for unilateral suspensions for things like simple possession of cannabis, whereas alcohol is not treated with the same severity. Melrose can take steps to ensure that we are not overreacting because of reliance on an outdated state law that allows, but does not require, an action. The state data in Melrose shows three big offense categories listed for the majority of students' discipline, physical violence and two categories of really unspecified offense types that are not criminal and may involve substances. We need to really dig deeper into what the underlying offenses are using local data and reporting that is more clear than the state data. Also, we need to evaluate the consequences are uniformly applied. The data suggests that that is not the case and we must examine where bias has found its way into the process. We must evaluate all of the steps in the administrative process that results in discipline, like out-of-school suspension, to understand where bias can play a role. We should consider setting up a standing committee of administrative and staff that evaluates decisions like out-of-school suspension in each occurrence to ensure that we are critical of our processes. Finally, the school committee should regularly evaluate the processes and procedures around school discipline and monitor and discuss the use of disciplinary measures on its agenda, as well as critically evaluate detailed data provided by the district to avoid these types of disproportionate outcomes for students of color. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Margaret, you're next.
Thank you. First, I would certainly want to look at the more recent data. The last couple of years during and post-COVID, it changed us all, probably in some ways, but I'd want very updated data. And then drilling down on the data which has been mentioned. So what, at what levels were the suspensions? How many teachers were involved? For example, if there were one or two teachers who had referred for suspension and it wasn't in other places, that would be an important data point. What infractions caused the suspensions? Were the suspensions due to misunderstanding around culture that might not be interpreted equally by those reporting the behavior? And are there other patterns or trends identified that can be holistically addressed? So it's really getting granular with the data. In terms of eliminating, certainly isolating the causes of suspensions and addressing any immediate issues, like I said, like if one or two teachers were involved, ensuring that all disciplinary actions and the codes of conduct are being followed, like due process, specifics around students with disabilities, because as we know, there are different rules for students with disabilities. We need to encourage all parents to sit down and read the codes of conduct thoroughly and ensure that all parents are informed of and understand the appeal process using a method they will most likely hear and process. We have to get to them where they are. We have to determine what training is needed on an annual basis or in an isolated form as a response to maybe a situation. We have to make sure that all school administrators involved are held accountable at their level for disciplinary actions. We have to hire more teachers of color who typically advocate suspending students of color less frequently due to classroom management techniques or pedagogical practices that allow them to build those trusting relationships with students. We need to listen and learn when students have a behavioral issue, when any of us are negative, feeling negative or aggressive. It's usually because there's another trigger, so we have to get to that root cause. And continuing to embed those intentional opportunities for students and teachers to build trust allows them, the teachers and other adults in the buildings, to get eyes on kids and try to determine what their challenges are before they result in behaviors that might not be appropriate or useful to anyone. So those are some ideas. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Margaret. David?
Great, thank you. So just as a starting point, I mean, I find this just really disheartening, partially because just the, just the moral angle of it, but also because if I'm not mistaken, the same question was asked in 2021 session. And I think in that environment, I think I have to step back and say, we didn't do something. We failed in the last two years. And we need to really assess what did we do or not do in the last two years and come up with something different. And to me, I look at this and say, we have to make sure, number one, it's a goal. Number two, we have some measurement on it because ultimately that is going to be what the superintendent and the district and so on react to. But then beyond that, it has to become like a true root cause analysis. And I do this a lot with AD and I probably won't go too far into that. But, but part of that is just getting all of the theoretical cases that could have led to a suspension, looking at each one of them and saying, what exactly happened in this case? What are the preventive actions we can do in the future? What are the corrective actions which may turn into policy recommendations? It may turn into many of the things that, that the other candidate said. But I think by going through this in a structured way, we can ultimately break the cycle that we're in right now. And with regards to Stonem, absolutely, we want to learn from them, but we also need to understand that our culture in Melrose is different. And just applying what they've done may or may not work. And so taking that cultural angle, taking the, what other districts have done in this space as well, and using that to inform our decisions moving forward, those are the things that, that I see here. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Question number two, this is going to go to Matt, so be ready, Matt. The Racial Justice Community Coalition has regularly heard from its members of color and has voiced to the school committee concerns about obstacles for working parents, especially parents based in Boston. In particular, the rule that requires in-person attendance for all committee meetings, such as search screening committees for school administrators, which all but exclude Metco parents from inclusion. What is your understanding of the necessity of the in-person rule? And if elected, what would you do to ensure greater inclusion in the search committee process?
Matt, thank you. So I think we can do more to expand the involvement of the community in many of our big decisions. And certainly with the process of choosing the role of the superintendent. In my experience as a member of the Board of Directors for the Community Action Agency of Somerville, we've extensively used remote meetings since the pandemic to increase our flexibility and increase access. Our board is actually made up of one-third of members from the low-income community that we serve in Somerville. And this group of board members has traditionally been the hardest to fully engage in board activities. But with the pandemic, we not only saw an explosion of need among families we served, but suddenly shifted to a remote world where we had never tried this experience. We not only had, we have not had a formal board meeting since February of 2020 in person and have increased participation from our low-income board members. During that time, we've successfully grown the organization by expanding staff, expanding programs well beyond our core Head Start program and being able to more collaboratively involve guests and community members more easily in meetings. Our meetings are open to the public and sometimes community members even join. And we've also still dealt with deeply sensitive topics with discretion and care. No question that there are some things that are lost when you're not in person. But the benefit of increasing that access is truly very important. And the types of meetings and different types of groups that can use it, it takes down a significant barrier for them to access it. So I would certainly support this type of action while on the school committee.
Thanks, Matt. Margaret, same question.
Thank you. Three clarifications quickly. There have been and will continue to be many screening committees for administrators. So I looked at that screening committees for school administrators sort of holistically. So for district leadership positions like a assistant superintendents and principals, screenings and interviews are generally held after the school day to accommodate applicants and the district reps who lead or sit on the interview team. And for the superintendent, the screening committee and school committee meetings are generally held in the evening. So just wanted to clarify that. Also, parents of color include Metco parents as well as resident parents, of course. And Metco parents could be coming from homes in Boston or in, from workplaces in and around Melrose or other areas. And resident parents could be coming from the same area. So I'm wondering if it might be more about where they travel to on the way home versus where they're coming from and making any presumptions because we don't want to do that separately. And in addition, there was a thoughtful discussion by the school committee on September 26 relative to this topic. And I'd certainly encourage anyone who's interested to watch that. So I won't speak to internal administrative searches, only to the superintendent search. But first, the committee was asked for in-person meetings primarily to protect the privacy of the candidates and for the value of collective learning in a face-to-face setting, which was mentioned a minute ago. While it might seem large, the Massachusetts education space is relatively small. And if there are concerns around the potential for inadvertent or unintentional or intentional sharing of interviews using virtual meeting links, that, that could be very difficult based on a candidate's home district and what families there might find out. Secondly, in-person engagement, as we know, is less distracting. We don't have our devices out. We don't have those kinds of things going on. And it does lead to that shared understanding through watching and adapting to body language and asking clarifying questions that are difficult to do online and helps build those relationships and build that group dynamic that leads to a cohort, which is, you know, really a true team. So how to ensure greater inclusion? I would suggest we might want us create a task force that's charged with determining how to provide more opportunities for all of the searches that we do. So some things they could explore would be, what are the barriers to in-person meetings? Is it the time of day, including those who do shift work? If there are folks who, who work, you know, 11 to 7, is, are they, do they have equitable access also? Could, is it location, those living in Boston or Melrose and traveling from another place? Another exploration would be what meeting, uh, delivery method would provide the most equitable access? Can the search process be split up? Sorry, Jay? Oh, thanks, Cory. Yep, bye.
Thank you. David, same question.
Yeah, thank you. So I've worked in the hybrid environment for over 20 years now, and I think we have an opportunity here to, to look at things a little differently. I think that there are things that are best done in person and that's sort of a core team where you do need certain sensitive things that have to be sort of in, just in the room. But I also think that there is opportunities here for extended teams as well, and that's something that I use pretty regularly in my work because I work with people around the world and I'm not traveling all around the world. So that's just the reality of my life, and I think it's the reality of a lot of people's lives who may not be able to come to Melrose or may not have the ability to be in a meeting at five in the afternoon or seven in the evening or so on. And so I tend to look at this as how we can split the, and broaden the team, core and extended team. And for that extended team, offering that remote or hybrid option. And beyond just the, the search committees, to actually doing this on a more regular basis to engage with Metco families or others that aren't able to attend in person, who may have feedback, that want to be able to give that, or even going down to Boston at some central location and meeting people in person. Just because we're in Melrose, some of our students are not, and families are not. I think we as public servants have an obligation to meet them and their place as well. So that's my position there. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Seamus, same question.
Sure. Thanks for the question. I don't agree that we should be limiting virtual participation. I think that is something that would strengthen us by having the option for people to join virtually. We saw this throughout the COVID pandemic. The school committee met virtually. They participated in executive sessions virtually. So it's hard to understand why we can't provide a virtual option for administrative searches. We do have, the technology exists to have some people in the room and some people remote. You can set up the, the screen so that you're seeing who's speaking at different times. So that certainly is something that, the technology exists. That is the direction we're probably heading in as a society to begin with, of having more virtual and hybrid meetings. So it's hard for me to understand in the year 2023 that we'd be moving forward with a search that does not provide this as an option.
Thank you, Seamus. Moving on to question number three. In the 2023 school year, as in years past, Melrose reported no black teachers. This is a loss for all students and is especially harmful for our black students. Research shows that when black students have black teachers, they are more likely to thrive academically and less likely to be suspended. What ideas do you have about recruiting and retaining black teachers? Margaret, this one goes to you first.
Okay, thanks, Jay. So thank you for this important question. I agree that this is a very difficult situation and our blacks, students would also, and I'd also argue that it's harmful for all students. So harmful for black students and harmful for all students. We all need to see and hear and trust educators who look different from each other to build community and develop the relationships that result in better school attendance, watchfulness for student concerns before they become a problem and more. It's just like the video we watch and the social places we visit, and sadly, the obituaries we read, they have to reflect everyone in our collective experience to understand and appreciate that oftentimes we're very much alike and, and we can, we can come together and we can build trust together. Also noteworthy is that virtually all districts in the Commonwealth unfortunately face this challenge, even while the percentage of students and teachers of color are different. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a goal of reaching 26% teachers of color by 2030. So we have a long way to go. In addition, I'd argue that we need to explore all the positions in the district. Every staff member in the Melrose Public Schools has a common purpose, which is to work hard every day so every student can achieve their greatest potential. So that commonality builds school community, which, and it includes cafeteria workers and crossing guards and bus drivers and maintenance workers and administrators and school secretaries and everybody else. But we need to see many faces of color and different kinds of people. They, we all come together to build an important fabric in our community. So things we could do, we can expect that search committees will engage in non-bias training as a matter of consistent practice. And we're embedding that in the superintendent search this year. Increasing efforts to recruit and retain paraprofessionals of color, a direct pipeline to the teacher role. They already know Melrose and our culture and they believe in the power of public education and they're supported by students, families and staff. They already know Melrose and our culture and they believe in the power of public education and they're supported by students, families and staff. Increasing outreach to alums of color who are known to be in the teaching profession and encourage them to come back to Melrose. Identifying students through their guidance counselors who are considering studying, teaching in college. And providing senior year internships, college internships and more. Submitting grant applications like the state's two forty-two grant called the Massachusetts Public K to twelve Educator Diversification Grant. That supports this work. Advocator advocating for more educator diversity grant funding from the state to continue the work. Continuing to support a shared DEI coordinator who can support these efforts. And purposely building recruitment and training programs for non-teaching staff positions. Are all ideas to recruit and retain black teachers and black staff members. All part of our school family.
Thank you, Margaret. David, same question.
Thanks. So I tend to view this through two lenses. One is what can we do to make Melrose an attractive school district for all teachers? And then what specifically can we do to attract and retain black teachers? And I start with the all teachers because there's ultimately a base that needs to exist to be an employer of choice. And we have to remember that the folks in Wakefield and Stonem and elsewhere are nice people too, and they're also looking to increase their diversity. And right now, we're in a structural disadvantage. We pay our teachers ten thousand dollars less than the state average in surrounding districts. We have a lack of trust between the administration and the teachers. And we just have examples of what I would just call petty mismanagement where like the copy paper ran out middle of last year. And I'm informed by my kids that there's no toner in the middle school and the high school today. Those are not things that anybody wants to deal with on a daily basis. And if you have an opportunity to go somewhere else where you don't have to deal with those. You're probably going to go there. So we have to kind of solve some of those basics just foundationally. And I think secondly. There is some good news here in terms of just the state. I was looking at the numbers in the last five years. The number of black educators in Massachusetts increased by thirty-seven percent, so about two thousand teachers, which is pretty amazing, actually. White educators only increased by four percent. It was four thousand, just a higher number to start with. But the good news is that the size of the applicant pool is increasing substantially. And so in that environment, I ask, what is our recruitment process? And have we changed that from what we may have been doing a few years ago? I hired, I hire a number of people in my roles. And I'm always amazed when a recruiter tells me they posted it on a website and then they didn't get any applicants and oh, well, that's my problem. No, that's not my problem. Recruitment needs to change their tactics to attract more talent and the right kind of talent that we're looking for. And I guess in terms of retaining, the truth is, I don't really know the answer here. And I'm okay with that because ultimately I want to learn from other districts. I want to learn from groups like they're hosting this warrant tonight. From students and really try to apply those learnings then to what we can do to make Melrose a better district for black teachers and to retain as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, David. Seamus, same question.
Sure. Thanks, Jake. I think probably like everybody, I found it shocking to. Hear that we do not have any black teachers. And I think ways to tackle this would be to. Recruit them. And I think one of the things we could do is form strategic relationships with local colleges. To develop a pipeline of student teachers who can then become full-time teachers in our district. We can make this a priority in our superintendent search. We also need a dedicated HR department within the schools to accomplish something like this. We also need to pay our teachers more money. This is an expensive area to live, and if we're chronically underpaying our teachers. Anyone that is looking to be recruited is probably going to go where they can make more money. And then I think we need to establish a better relationship with our teachers before we can truly. Recruit and retain a diverse workforce. If you Google the city of Melrose Teachers Contract. I think people would think twice about coming here based on what we went through the last year. So I think we can start to rectify this by having a community conversation about our teachers' contract, which is up in a short period of time. But this is something that is a challenge for all school districts. So I think the Melrose School Committee should. Endorse and advocate for changes at the state level. I know Senator Lewis has filed an Educated Diversity Act. That would help diversify the teacher pipeline across the state and work with. Requiring inclusion plans and improve the tracking and analysis of data so we can see where people are. So I think that those are some steps that Melrose could take to increase and then retain black teachers. Thank you.
Thanks, Seamus. Matt, we haven't heard from you in a while, so.
Do I get four minutes then? But thank you for this. I think it really identifies a key area of concern. Where we need to find ways to make it being less isolating in a classroom. And I think that's what's at the core of the question here. For students of color, it is less isolating when there are more teachers of color for them to see in the classroom and around schools. And I think it's also important, though, to mention that we're not only falling short on black educators, but we're also falling short on teachers of other races as well. Our largest minority group in Melrose is Asian, followed closely by Hispanic students. And both of those groups are underrepresented in the teaching workforce. And nearly twenty percent of our students are actually multi-language learners as well. So we do have a lot of diversity. And I do want to raise up that we also have some great educators in the district of color. And you know, particularly at the Roosevelt, we have a recent Latino Educator of the Year as our Assistant Principal. So we do have some great educators already and we should expand on that. So, you know, drilling a little bit deeper down on the importance of black teachers, this certainly relates to the issue of discipline that was raised before. We need all of these types of pieces in place to make real progress on this issue and particularly on discipline-related issues. And as others have mentioned, this is a statewide and national problem. In my work in the Senate, I've actually identified this every, we've always talked about this every year in our discussion around how to recruit educators. As a major issue that every district across the Commonwealth is facing. And, you know, it's important to note that districts like Everett in Boston, who have predominantly students of colors. In their, in their districts also are falling short on these as well. So one answer is to really develop the pipeline, something I've actively helped to do for the past number of years. I've been working. In my current role to provide funding for a program called Journey into Education and Teaching. This is a program that works with paraprofessionals of color. To help them obtain teaching degrees and certifications and really builds them up to become a full licensed teacher in the future. And this is a very difficult process, of course, because it involves so much work to get to that teaching license. So on the school committee, I would certainly look to find programs like that to begin a real direct recruitment process. Into the district and identify how Melrose could participate in more programs like that as well. I think we also, as some candidates have mentioned, really have to work on how attractive of a district it is to come and work here for anybody. With a competitive salary, we also have to show as a community strong support for meeting the needs of our teaching workforce. Of the needs of our schools and of our students to meet the goals that we have. Without showing that support as a community, without really investing in the basic elements of our schools. We're going to fall short on recruiting and retention. As everyone has said, you know, you have to have. A very strong district to attract attractive candidates.
Thanks, Matt. Question number four. David, this one's coming to you. Participation fees and extracurricular activities, including sports. Exclude lower-income students and perpetuates systemic racism. Scholarship models are sometimes proposed to put, that are sometimes proposed, put students in a position of seeking charity. It may reduce a sense of belonging. This was recently covered in a Boston Globe article back in August that talks about it. Do you support eliminating participation fees in extracurricular sports and activities, David?
Yep. So conceptually, I do agree with eliminating fees. And I think it's important that we as a society recognize the importance of arts and athletics in shaping our kids. And I think we've inadvertently landed in a place where these things are seen as nice to have as opposed to the must haves. That they can be for a number of kids. I do see two practical challenges, though, and the first and foremost is just that our school district is structurally underfunded. In another year, we're going to have another round of teacher contract negotiations, which I would expect to be difficult. Given our current pay structure, we don't properly maintain our buildings. In a few weeks ago, we couldn't even take free air conditioners because our electrical is outdated. We don't have enough space for a paraprofessional to support the kid that needs help. And we don't have enough money to hire the specialists and paraprofessionals to close the gap in educational performance that exists between white and. And low-income, black, Latino and so on subgroups. And I think that last one, at least for me, is always going to come as a higher priority, simply because the gap is just too great right now. There shouldn't be a gap, but it's so off the charts. It just, we have to address that. I think second, though, there is a more societal challenge here. If we eliminate fees, we have to recognize that some parents are going to take that money. That they save and they're going to recycle it into private lessons and coaching. And it can actually lead to the unintended consequence of further exacerbating the very inequality that we're trying to solve. So for that reason, I don't think we'll be able to eliminate the fees anytime soon. I'm not sure the scholarship model is the best approach right now. I know Community Voting in Boston. Has a sliding scale that they use based on income, which also helps to address those that may be in the uncomfortable middle. That may be something which we at the district can explore and very open to that. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Seamus.
So if you wondered where I was for a few minutes, I had an invasion of a four-year-old and a six-year-old to the room. I was inside to relocate.
We're glad you're safe.
Yeah, thanks. So we need to be very careful when it comes to extracurricular fees, particularly for the after-school fees. The National After-School Alliance's two thousand twenty-one report found that black parents support extracurricular activities. Because they have a positive social, emotional and academic benefits. Allows students to have shared experiences with their friends. It reduces screen time, builds life skills, positive relationships, improvise for safe environments. So I think as we look at fees, we do have to be careful about how much we charge so that families can afford to participate. I don't think we can eliminate fees, however, because we have such a chronic situation going on with our school budget. That we just aren't in a position to eliminate all fees, but I think we need to be mindful of what those are. And make sure that they are affordable for all people. And I think maybe getting some feedback on what's a reasonable fee versus an unreasonable fee is something that school community members should take on. And then if it is at all possible to look at other models that other school districts are doing, we could look at that, but. I think they need to be reasonable fees that families can afford. But I don't think unfortunately we're in a position as a school district to eliminate all fees.
Thanks, Seamus. Matt?
Thank you. So, yes, I think this is a significant problem. For sure. And we have clearly become reliant on the budget that has, we spend a significant amount of time talking about the offsets budget. Which is what this feeds into. And I do support limiting our fees to the greatest extent possible, and I also agree that. It is going to be extremely challenging with our current budget structure to do that. I also think it's really important to not only talk about extracurriculars, but as was mentioned, after-school, but also early ed. We have significant fees for early ed. That is a very large barrier for getting students into the classrooms. Where we want them earlier before K. So, you know, I do think this is a very important issue and it particularly impacts people of color, for sure. As people of color are often in a low-income category as well. So I think we do need to take a significant look at this. I was an athlete myself. And an athlete without a lot of financial means, and there were seasons I couldn't participate in. Or I didn't have the right equipment for, and that was very disheartening as an athlete. And the only. Sport that I was moderately successful at was the sport with the lowest financial barrier, track and field. Because I could participate in every season of it. So I do think that this should be in the future, not at the forefront of our revenue policy. It's clearly harmful, but it is the unfortunate reality of where we stand right now. And on the scholarship model, I think no matter how shameless you make a scholarship program. It's always going to be looked at differently by the student who is accepting that scholarship. And that student's experience is always going to feel different to them than they are for other students. And so, you know, I think we need to focus on removing the barriers as much as possible for everybody. We did this at the state level, and I think people are really seeing the benefits of it with school meals. Where we took a huge step forward in fighting childhood hunger. But also in making sure that there's not another space in the schoolroom, in the school building every day where a student without financial means feels different or stands out. So I think, you know, when we know that these financial barriers affect people of color disproportionately. It needs to be a serious area for improvement. It's going to require us all to contribute more so that all of our kids can find the joy of athletics or music or theater. Or, you know, get an early education for a three- to five-year-old. Ultimately, we all want to give our kids the most opportunities they can have upon graduation. And these extracurriculars are really actually a very big aspect of what makes somebody an attractive job candidate in the future. Or an attractive candidate for college as well. It's the things that you put on your resume going forward. And so I think these are, these are not as simple as just something that somebody might want to have. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Margaret?
Thank you very much. I one hundred percent support eliminating participation fees in co-curricular. And athletics. Before school, after school, and particularly in school activities. Certainly fine in performing arts, which is a hallmark of Melrose and a significant area of pride in our school family. And clubs. I think we don't want to forget clubs because they may have a very small donation. But, you know, they're really important to kids. My oldest started the juggling club. So thank goodness to Lisa Lord, who took on the juggling club. And he went after school and he juggled. And I said, you know, carry on because he found his passion and did something he liked. And that's what every kid should be able to do is something that really, you know, gets them excited and builds a culture and a community. That's, that's unique and important. So I, and that's theoretical, of course. I wish we could do that, but as has been said multiple times. Right now, that is, it's not possible. So I would start with certainly what happens inside the school day. So in those in-school music lessons would be my first priority. And then to move on. So with the financial situation, how would we do that? So we are vexed by very high and increasing transportation costs, as you know. And we work to pay our stipends that, you know, to the best that we can to those leaders of our extracurricular activities. And we are grateful for the incredible support of all of our booster clubs. But they're only for certain sports and art scripts. They're not uniforms. So if somebody has a passion outside a group that has a booster support. Then, you know, they might not be able to have that equitable access, which is unfair. I do wonder, Melrose High School does not have an alumni association. And I think that's an area that could be developed and incorporated and provide some of that support. We have great alumni and we have a wonderful Melrose Hall of Fame. With incredible athletes over many decades and they could be supportive there too. So again, those, you know, that money, that revenue is fluctuate, it fluctuates and it's unreliable, but it certainly could contribute. The bottom line, as has been said, is we need more revenue or we have to reduce staffing, which is eighty-three to eighty-six percent of our budget to accomplish this task. So there are very hard choices here. I would say if we can prioritize and chip away at it, that's the way to do things. But in total, that's a very heavy lift.
Thanks, Margaret. Looks like we'll have time for one last question. This question will come to Seamus. Here it is. How will you support our educators' commitment to teaching true and accurate US history regarding slavery? The Civil Rights Movement, Jim Crow, redlining, et cetera? If and when parents or political organizations pressure or attack individual educators. For accurately teaching the history of our country with regard to race relations? Seamus?
Sure. Thank you very much. And just a warning, I've now been joined by my six-year-old who is refusing to. Listen to her mother who's asking her to leave the room. So anyway, I definitely absolutely support. A social studies curriculum that's updated to reflect true US history. I absolutely support diversity within our language arts program, our English department. For, you know, books that are. Broad and maybe not always the most traditional ones. So I totally would support our teachers. I do not think Melrose is a place where we should be having these culture wars in the schools. Around true US history and the experiences that all Americans have had. I would, as a member of the school committee, definitely stand up for our teachers if they came under attack and speak of forcefully at the school committee meetings. It's just something that isn't, is just totally inappropriate. We know it's happening. In many parts of the country, I think we've been fortunate for the most part not to have something like this occur here in the city. And, you know, it's just, it would just be totally unacceptable for. Um, and um, you know, it's just, it it would just be totally unacceptable for um parents to be um aggressively going after our teachers in the manner that this question suggests. So I would stand up for our teachers. Um, and I I I actually, I'm getting my six-year-old yelling at me again. Sorry. Um, uh, so. So so to close, I'm sorry, I would support our teachers and um push back on anybody attacking them around these these issues. Thank you.
Thanks, Seamus. Matt?
Thank you. Um, I I really believe in history as a as a critical subject, and um I think it's it's very important to be critical of our own role in both collectively and individually in in how we, you know, approach society and the problems we face. I think we have to take this on from a place of cultural humility. Um, teaching the true crimes and accurate history isn't just about the the crimes committed by white enslavers or land takings by generations of settlers. It's also about learning and celebrating cultural traditions of historically or traditionally marginalized groups in our country. Um, I think that's a really important aspect of it. Uh, and you know, we're really not preparing our students if we don't teach them these things. Uh, we're we're going into a world where diversity is is really an important place to be and to to be knowledgeable about it. And I think we we do owe our cer- our students a service to do that. Um, put simply, I just, I won't tolerate teachers being attacked for teaching this this kind of education. Um, I'll certainly voice it that strongly now. I I fundamentally believe that. I I think that is something that uh we have to stand up against anytime it comes up in front of us, and I'll certainly do that on the school committee. Um, I I think that's intolerable to to have teachers uh doing the best they can to teach uh accurate history and to engage students with with um critical material like this a- and not stand up for them. So I I fundamentally will stand up for that.
Thank you, Matt. Margaret, same question.
Thanks, Jay. Um, I think um we have to ensure that our uh curriculum materials, policies reinforce our values related to accurate teaching, including library materials, because library materials are very close to my heart. Um, in addition to the textbooks and classroom selections, so what's in our school libraries has to align with our values and our volunteers who donate so much uh to our P T Os and school libraries. They have to be confident that their dollars are going to materials that are accurate. Massachusetts, uh as you know, has clear social studies frameworks to which uh we adhere, and they include teaching true and accurate U S history. Um, this is explained at open house nights, et cetera, and can re- be reinforced if there are challenges to teaching. We need to continue to support inquiry-based learning and a dedication to civics education. I'm delighted to see the students have much more voice and choice in those areas than they did in the past. We have to ensure alignment with the department's F A Q regarding race, racism and culturally responsive teaching in history and social science in Massachusetts, and you could Google that. Um, I think everyone should read this document if you haven't already. It's foundational and profound and impactful. We have to uphold our public comment responsibilities um as school committee members. Should people or organizational representatives speak to us at meetings? While speakers do have First Amendment rights, the committee members and the superintendent can reference and refute remarks in later parts of the agendas, which is appropriate. We can partner with city organizations. We are a community. Our school community is not isolated. We are part of the broader community. And we can build coalition that responds to any and all pressure or attacks on educators. Groups like the Human Rights Commission, the Mayor's Office, the City Council, groups like all of yours, and others can band together to communally condemn behaviors or rhetoric that's not aligned with who we are and what we do. And we can continue to evaluate and fund professional development that supports the teaching of accurate accurate history using primary sources and other best educational practices. You fund what you value, and this is what we value. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. David?
Yep. So I'll I'll echo much of what was said so far. I think at the end of the day, we have a fundamental responsibility to defend our teachers and to defend the curriculum uh that uh that we've implemented. Um, and I also think it's uh, it's actually a little nearer, I I fear, than we may realize. Uh, one of my team members uh lives in Reading, and he actually went to the library board a couple of weeks ago because people were looking to ban books there. Uh, something which I was a little surprised it was up in Reading. Um, so this may very well come towards us, and I think when it happens, it's important for us to distinguish between the lone wolves and the national sort of people found on Facebook versus local folks that have concerns. Obviously, the lone wolves, the national pressure groups, those things come and go, and and we have to just deal with them and and limit our engagement. Um, but locally, I think it can, it can kind of manifest itself in a way that's sort of an undercurrent, and um and I'm really happy to be here tonight and to speak, but I also know that there's folks who probably aren't going to attend here tonight. And I think we have to find ways to bridge our differences by reaching out to them. Um, one of the things I've been kind of fascinated by recently that Ireland used was uh citizen assemblies to uh bring together randomly selected people. They talk through a topic, they come to a consensus. Um, and it's a way of sort of bringing out the concerns that other people have in a way that's constructive and and ultimately leads to some consensus. Um, and I think through that, we can actually uh build more um capacity in our community to respond to this when it happens uh and also try to dial it down as well. So not just the school committee, but also try looking to broaden it uh in what we do here. Thank you.
Fabulous. And that concludes our um forum. We've come to the uh top of the hour here. Um, thank you for everybody for answering the questions directly, being concise so that we could get in as many questions as possible. Um, don't forget, everybody, that this will be recorded uh and posted, or this has been recorded and posted on Melrose Racial Justice Forums dot org. And please remember that on Tuesday, November seventh, it's time to vote. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.